Itin itu ni hunta ni minatran ta shitina lehesa turu ngua han. Menana siduus Senator Shelton gehelu madoria hu rekanisa ha.
Sutus Masi, Madam Speaker. Buenos, good morning. I move to waive notwithstanding section 1.02 Sessions of elehesa turu ngua han H1 Privileges of the floor, persons allowed to allow the students of DL Perez Elementary School onto the session floor.
Gimushon paratan afanhalim i studianten eskuelen elementarium DL Perez kogwati fa bot. Mapasi. Senator Perez kosinyun zogui itinazud. Pop fa bot finogi.
Sutus Masi, Madam Speaker. As we start our session on Earth Month, let us honor the people of this land that have come before us and who have left us with a deep spirituality indigenous wisdom rooted in respect and gratitude for that which gives life. We ask for guidance in restoring this sacred duty by creating a world that provides and uplifts all life so that we can leave this world a better place than what we inherited. We ask your guidance to restore our sense of humanity by breaking down the walls built to divide us for profit and greed. As public servants, we ask for clarity and strength to do what is right for the betterment of our people as a whole and not for special or self-interest, to restore the public trust and to bring light, hope, and peace during these trying times. We ask for your protection from all harms. Ginengi matenguma. Asaina itza hululu manmatuham gi itzahagu sentomekuna in gaga gahau nu sinaguetmu. Sen magas ilanget zanitano imana anuk zan ti mana anuk. Na fanma aina hamnu imina lakmu zan nu suha ti tinalazi gi itzahami. Na fanma okte hamnu imina laulakmu zan na ihamnu imenetgut. Imenhalim zan i nina siniya na inna fahadzen i chetok ami pagu. Umatuna hauni taihenetkok asaina itza hululu ta gueno monhan. Creator the most high, we all come to you in a deep vow to ask for guidance. True creator of the heavens and the earth, the seen and the unseen, enlighten all of us with your light and banish all human frailties. Fill us up with your goodness and give us all the strength and wisdom and the capacity to complete our work today. With eternal praise to you Creator the most high, and so it shall be. Amen.
Sutus Masi, Senator Perez. Parata expresa agradecimiento gineni tauta guahan. Elehesa turu ngua han hu rekanisa imilazen mastakilu na sacrificu inama maa strigigiima congressu guahan zan gi durantin kada session. Ta rekanisa imilazen mastakilu na sacrificu Senator Shelton hu rekanisa ha.
On behalf of a grateful island and country, we honor Engineman Petty Officer Second Class Edward Cruz Cruz and the family of Engineman Petty Officer Second Class Edward Cruz Cruz for making the ultimate sacrifice in service and defense of our island and country.
Sutus Masi. Parantogui i infersi ifanoguitamoru i anten national Estados Unidos hu rekanisa i studianten eskuelen elementarium DL Perez. Sutus Masi. Sutus Masi. I studianten eskuelen elementarium DL Perez, Sutus Masi. Clerks, Hadiman Gaighi.
Senator Barnett. Senator Blas. Senator Brown. Senator Duñez. Senator Fisher. Senator Lujan. Vice Speaker Munia Barnes. Senator Parkinson. Senator Perez. Senator Canata. Senator San Augustine. Senator Siniklis. Senator Shelton. Senator Titegui. Speaker Terlahi. Madam Speaker, there is a quorum.
Sutus Masi, clerks. Senator Shelton gehelu madoria hu rekanisa ha.
Sutus Masi, Madam Speaker. I move to approve the legislative journals dated March 202023 and March 27, 2023, subject to corrections.
Gimushon kogwati fa bot. Antaza mapasi mushon. Senator Shelton gehelu madoria hu rekanisa ha.
Sutus Madi, Madam Speaker. There are communications and petitions and I move that they be appended to today's session journal.
Gimushon na ipetisshon zan mensahi ni ma konserera gi kasetan sesyon kogwati fa bot. Antaza mapasi mushon. Senator Shelton gehelu madoria hu rekanisa ha.
Sutus Masi, Madam Speaker. There are messages from Imaga Hagan Guahan and I move that they be appended to today's session journal.
Gimushon na imensahin gineni Imaga Hagan Guahan na ma konserera gi kasetan sesyon kogwati fa bot. Antaza mapasi mushon. Senator Shelton gehelu madoria hu rekanisa ha.
Sutus Masi, Madam Speaker. There are reports of standing committees and I move that they be appended to today's session journal.
Gimushon kogwati fa bot. Antaza mapasi mushon. Senator Shelton gehelu madoria hu rekanisa ha.
Sutus Masi, Madam Speaker. There are no reports of select committees.
Sutus Masi.
Madam Speaker, I move that bills introduced 80-37COR, 81-37LS, through 85-37LS, and 86-37COR, and 97-37COR, and resolutions introduced, resolution numbers 60-37LS, 61-37COR, and 62-37COR, 63-37LS, through 68-37LS, and 69-37COR through 70-37LS, through 74-37LS, and 75-37COR through 83-37COR be deemed to have been given their first reading.
Gimushon kogwati fa bot. Antaza mapasi mushon. Senator Shelton gehelu madoria hu rekanisa ha.
Madam Speaker, I move to excuse senators not present at this time for today's legislative session.
Gimushon kogwati fa bot. Antaza mapasi mushon. Senator Shelton.
Sutus Masi, Madam Speaker. I move that all congratulatory, commendatory, and condolence resolutions introduced today and for the remainder of this legislative session be considered first read and adopted to allow the Legislative Council to make technical corrections and to add all senators as cosponsors.
Gimushon kogwati fa bot. Antaza mapasi mushon. Gaighi motions. Kogwa motion Senator Perez hu rekanisa ha.
Sutus Masi, Madam Speaker. I move to place the nomination of Daniel Tai Ting Fung to serve on the Guam Environmental Protection Agency Board of Directors from the Committee on Environment Revenue and Taxation Labor Procurement Statistics Research and Planning onto the session agenda.
On that motion to place that nomination on the agenda, is there any objection? Senator Tai Tigui, you are recognized.
Sutus Masi, Madam Speaker. Madam Speaker, just a quick inquiry. This individual that was placed on the agenda is being requested to place on the agenda. Did this individual have the committee report on the website when we had the committee on rules?
Senator.
Yes, so.
Barnett, would you reel to that question?
Thank you, Madam. The committee report for that nomination was not available at the date of our rules meeting, but if I'm not mistaken, I think it was submitted the day after. Thank you. And it's been on the website, Madam Speaker. Thank you.
For 10 days. Sutus Masi.
Sutus Masi, Madam Speaker. Madam Speaker, due to the fact that hearing wasn't even held before we had the committee on rules, I have to object to it being placed on the session agenda based on the premise that we decided any bills going onto the agenda has had a public hearing and has been placed on the legislative website. Thank you. And I've been very stern about that.
Sutus Masi. On the motion, there's been an objection. On the motion to place the nominee onto the session agenda. All in favor, please raise your hand. Motion fails.
Point of information, ma'am, or point of inquiry.
Please state your point of inquiry.
If it fits in the rules, I would like to ask Senator Perez if she could provide a little more detail because I understand that there's some urgency behind this appointment.
Yes, I guess point of information regarding the nomination. Without him, the board cannot meet quorum. And any notice of violations that is referred to or that is deemed to buy the agency will not be acted upon and we can lose enforcement capability. And if I can ask perhaps the reconsideration of the body for putting him on the agenda. The fact is open government law was met. It was on the website. It was submitted and on the website for over five days. And so it meets the requirements of open government law and, you know, access to our colleagues to view it. So I ask for reconsideration of the vote at this time.
Gimushon. Is there an objection? Is there an objection? So on the motion, there's been an objection.
Based on the fact that it didn't even have a public hearing. If these measures are met.
Objection noted.
Okay, thank you.
So on the motion to reconsider. All in favor of reconsidering, please raise your hand. Motion fails. Still on motions. Are there any other motions?
Ma'am, I'd just like to make a point of information that some of my colleagues who were opposing placing this on the agenda had no issues voting for the resolution that formed a special investigative committee that didn't have a public hearing. I supported that measure as well, ma'am, but I just wanted to get that information out on the floor on the record. Thank you.
Point of information, Madam Chair. Please state your point of information, Senator Tai Tigui.
Point of information, I who made the objection did object for that resolution to be placed because it didn't have. So just for the record.
Sutus Masi. Okay, press.
Thank you.
Antaza motions. Senator San Augustine hu rekanisa ha. Gaighi gave legislative concurrence.
Sutus Masi, Madam Speaker. I move to place in the voting file from the Committee on General Government Operation appropriation the nomination of Christopher A. Cruz to serve as a member of the Guam Ethics Commission with the recommendation to do confirm.
On that motion, are there any objections? Senator Tai Tigui.
Just a point of inquiry, Madam Chair.
Please state your point of inquiry.
Is it on the, has it been placed on the agenda during the committee on rules?
Okay.
Okay, Sutus Masi.
On that motion to place the nomination of Christopher A. Cruz to serve as a member of the Guam Ethics Commission? I mean, no, this is, sorry, it's a place in the voting file. It's already on legislative concurrence. We are now on a motion to move it from legislative concurrence to the voting file. On that motion, is there any objection? Objection? There's. Yes, I answered that in point of inquiry. This has been on the agenda. It's noticed. All right. Is there any objection? Calling again for an objection on the motion. On the motion, is there any objection?
Point of inquiry, Madam Speaker. Can I have one minute because from what I was.
Please state your point of inquiry.
Was this particular individual, had a public hearing, met all the requirements of his committee report being placed on the website during the committee on rules and then placed on the agenda? That's just real simple.
Okay. Sutus Masi. On the motion, are there any objections? Seeing no objection, motion carries. Gaighi pagu, second reading. Bill number 1-37COR. Senator Perez, you are recognized.
Sutus Masi, Madam Speaker. I move to place Bill 1-37COR sponsored by myself. It's an act to amend section 24105 of chapter 24 titled loving Guam code annotated relative to excluding the value added to buildings from the installation of photovoltaic solar panels and roof tiles for the purpose of levying real estate taxes onto the third reading file and I wish to discuss.
Kontigui.
The aim of Bill 1-37 is to help homeowners cope with rising costs of living due to fuel and electricity costs by exempting the additional real estate tax valuation by installing solar panels or solar roof tiles. The money families save on their power bills can be used for other important needs and it is circulated within the local economy. The National Renewable Energy Lab states that for homes that have installed solar panels reducing energy costs and carbon emissions, the home value increases by $20 for every $1 saved on energy bills. For example, if a solar energy system saves $700 per year, the value of the home increases by $14,000. The environmental benefit for our island is also another major consideration for Bill 1-37. Reduced in greenhouse gases through renewable energy helps mitigate climate change and an existential threat to the life on the Pacific Islands. It is estimated that, sorry, DRT currently does not assess taxes on improvements and therefore there is, according to the fiscal note, there is no impact to the real property tax revenues upon the enactment of Bill 1-37. I ask for my colleague's support in advance. Sutus Masi.
Sutus Masi, Senator Perez. On the bill, Senator Tai Tigui, you are recognized.
Sutus Masi, Madam Speaker, and good morning to my colleagues. I stand in full support of Bill 1. I know that the author has done everything in her power to ensure, you know, going green and renewable energies pushing forward. I do have a question though, and it's just a real quick one. If she should yield?
Would the sponsor yield to, please state your point of inquiry.
Okay, my question is, is the homeowner business required to obtain a building permit from DPW to have photovoltaic solar panel systems installed on their locations? And if so, is there a permit waived? If that permit is waived?
Would the sponsor yield to that question?
I can yield, but I don't have the answer to that. I can look for the answers for you as far as waiving permit fees for installation.
Sutus Masi. I think that every opportunity that we have in our community to go green, you know, and put no hindrances in front of them, the opportunity is there. So I guess that, you know, we'll move forward with this. And if the question comes up, then I think, I'm pretty sure the author of the legislation will be quick to introduce the legislation to provide that easy access for these individuals to put their solar panels on the roof. So thank you so much, Madam Speaker.
Sutus Masi, Senator Tai Tigui, on the bill. Senator San Augustine, you are recognized.
Thank you, Madam Speaker. Just like to levy, if the author would yield a question reference to, is the owner of the home adding the value of the solar panels to the value of the home if it was subject to sale? And if they are, then the question of levying taxes then becomes very iffy. Because when you increase the value of your home based on the solar panel, then you should be paying the taxes for it. If you're not going to include it, then my God, if G, don't add it to your taxes. I agree to that. Thank you. And if.
Are you asking the sponsor to yield?
Yes, please.
With the sponsor yield to that question.
Sorry, can you rephrase the question?
Basically, Madam Speaker, is the owner of the property adding, increasing the value of the home using the solar panel value? If the answer is yes, then levy of taxes should be appropriate.
So I think there's a difference between valuation, like what's assessed and what is invested. So if it can provide clarification on what, is it evaluation or investment?
Madam Speaker, when anybody's going to sell their house, there's an appraisal value. If they include the solar panel, then so does the taxes will follow. If they don't include it, it's almost like adding an extra garage that doesn't have no value. Then of course I can understand that. But when you add solar panel to the value of your, let for example, you build a house, you have a house, you add solar panels, then tomorrow you want to sell it. But you don't want to pay the property tax on it? No, no. The property price has gone up because of the solar panel. That's the only thing I'm questioning. Is it being added on to the value of the property? If it is, then it's only right that you pay the taxes for it.
Would the sponsor yield?
Yes, I yield to the question. So currently during the public hearing, Department of Revenue and Taxation said during the last triennial evaluation, solar panels was not included in the assessment of the value of the home. And so with the rise in renewable energies on Guam, I think it's important to follow other jurisdictions throughout the United States. There are 36 jurisdictions that do not include the valuation of solar panels. So I think this is a good move as we try to transition to more fuel independence. I hope that answers the question. I hope that answers the question.
Senator San Augustine.
Madam Speaker, it kind of answers it. I never use DRT as a basis for determining the value of my house. I use appraisal value. And I do have solar panel, and I won't include it if I was selling my house. Just want to make sure that we have that understanding, provided it does not add and increase the value of the home if we're not going to levy them for taxes on the value. That's all. Thank you.
Sidoz masi. Senator San Augustine. On the bill, Senator Blas, you are recognized.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Madam Speaker, Madam Speaker, the sponsor or the author of the legislation can yield to a question with regard to what the definition of tiles are, roof tiles, as it relates to solar panels?
Would the sponsor yield to that question?
Yes, I do. So there are other configurations of capturing solar light to convert it to electrical energy. And so we all know solar panels, that's pretty quite prevalent, or at least in our concept. But I think, so solar tiles are a different version, so it would be, it would capture other versions of equipment that capture solar light and convert it to electrical
Senator Blas.
Thank you, Madam Speaker. You know, with that explanation, I think that with regards to, and recognizing that it's in a section that says improvements defined, I'm a bit concerned here with regard to whether or not these roof tiles, as is stated here, it just says added from photovoltaic solar panels and roof tiles. I'm just concerned that the roof tiles, the definition of the roof tiles is a little bit broad here in that roof tiles could be a number of things when you're talking about construction of a home. And I just don't want any ambiguity. If there is the roof tiles, if it's solar or photovoltaic roof tiles, then I, you know, but again, I'm not privy, I'm not, I don't understand that technology enough to be able to proffer the proper language there. I'm just a little concerned here that the term here, roof tiles, is a little, is a bit broad, a little ambiguous, and I don't want that to be, as a result of this, you know, somebody goes in and, you know, changes out all of their roof tiles from ceramic to terracotta, and all of a sudden, we don't, we don't add it to the value. Same concern that, you know, good senator from Jigo has. So I leave it to the author to be able to provide some specificity in this definition because as it stands right now, it's too, for me, it's too broad. Thank you very much, Madam Speaker.
Sidoz masi. Senator Blas. On the bill? On the bill? If there's no one else to speak on the bills, sponsors recognize Senator Perez.
Yes, thank you, Madam Speaker. If I can ask for a quick recess, just to discuss the matter.
All right, we're on a two-minute recess.
We're back from recess. Senator Perez, you have the floor.
Thank you, Madam Speaker. So I have an amendment to proffer in regards to one of the concerns of the retiring speaker. And basically, the amendment is, it was actually co-written by Senator Blass and myself. And basically what it does, it just adds the word photovoltaic in front of roof tiles to make sure that we are specifically addressing that.
Everyone should have a copy of the amendment? On the amendment, is there anyone else who'd like to be recognized on the amendment? Pardon, Senator Fisher?
Point of inquiry?
Please state your point of inquiry.
Thank you, ma'am. It reads the term improvements shall not include the value added from photovoltaic solar panels and photovoltaic roof tiles installed on buildings. Is that for the purpose of calculating property taxes?
Would the sponsor yield to that inquiry?
Yes, the point of the bill is to exempt that from being included in the value of property taxes.
Property taxes.
Okay, so, okay, so it's, is it, may I follow up?
You have the floor, sir.
Thank you. Senator Perez, so this is essentially identical to the prior bill, but this one merely clarifies that photovoltaic roof tiles are referred to as opposed to some sort of a decorative or a, is that correct?
Are you asking her to yield again? Would you yield to that question, Senator?
Yes, I yield to the question. Yes, so basically it clarifies what the roof tiles, so it's not just any roof tiles, it's photovoltaic roof tiles. So yeah, that's, it adds to the bill, amends the bill.
Thank you very much.
Thank you. Senator Fisher, anyone else on the amendment? On the amendment? If not, then the sponsor may close on the amendment. Is there any objection to the amendment? On the amendment, is there any objection? Seeing no objection, amendment passes. Senator Perez, you have the floor to close, but there's another hand up. Have you spoke on the bill, Senator Fisher?
I think point of order, Madam Speaker.
Yes, please state your point of order.
Yeah, I believe, yeah, some of them had already spoken.
So we are closing on the bill, yes.
So yeah, thank you, Madam Speaker. So Bill 137 really aims to incentivize homeowners and businesses to install photovoltaic panels to help mitigate the rising cost of electricity here on Guam and to provide a long-term fix. As you know, we are, we've been trying to help our residents by providing subsidies for the residential electricity costs, and the money is running out. And so we need to find a long-term solution which includes utilizing what's free, solar energy. And so this bill would incentivize that, that purpose, and the money that's saved, which it could be pretty significant, and it can go towards helping out for other needs in, within businesses and within our residents. It could also help transition Guam's portfolio to more renewable energy. As you know, we have mandate to reach 50% renewable energy and 100% renewable energy in the near future. And this, everywhere that we can provide this incentive would help bring that closer and make that become more of a reality. And to be clear, you know, this only affects property taxes, and it's a first step. I know there are other additions that my colleagues would like to add, but we could also produce another bill to address those concerns. But this one is a first step to exempting property taxes for those that want to help not only themselves in reducing electricity costs, but also helping our environment. It also builds a more resilient community. As you know, Pacific Islanders are on the front lines of climate change, and we really need to start our efforts here on Guam. Being Pacific Islanders, I ask for my colleagues' support. Zuzmasi.
Zuzmasi. Senator Perez, on the motion to place the bill onto the third reading file, is there any objection? The bill has amended. Is there any objection? Seeing no objection, motion passes. Senator Fisher, you are recognized. We are on second reading?
Yeah, thank you, ma'am. This is a point of inquiry. Is this the appropriate time to make an amendment to the bill?
No, sir, I'm sorry. The bill, discussion on the bill is closed.
Yeah, I had my hand up.
Yes, but your hand was raised while she was closing on the bill. Thank you. So Bill number one has been passed to the third reading file. We are now...
Point of order.
Please state your point of order.
Thank you, Madam Speaker. Madam Speaker, for the good gentleman from Tahuhofo, he spoke on the amendment. He didn't speak on the bill. He was asking for an opportunity to speak on the bill. So I ask for the body, motion for reconsideration of the body, on the actions of the body, relative to this bill, so that you can give my colleague the opportunity to be able to speak on the bill.
On the motion to reconsider the vote of moving Bill number one to the third reading, on the motion to reconsider, is there any objection? Is there any objection? Seeing no objection, motion passes. We will reconsider the vote. So...
Thank you.
We are back on Bill number one. Senator Fisher, you are recognized.
Thank you, ma'am. I have an amendment to the bill I would like to offer. And I just understand it, it's getting formatted and printed right now.
So the amendment is on the hard drive, and the copies are coming in momentarily.
Okay. Then I'll give my colleagues time to pull it up.
Yes, we'll take a one-minute recess while the copies come in. We're back from recess. Senator Fisher, the copies have been passed out. You have the floor.
Thank you, ma'am. First of all, I need to say that I support the bill, but I wanted to suggest an amendment to it, which I think would probably, well, will be added as a sub C. What concerns me is that a consumer can double-dip as the way the law is written because they can claim the value of the solar voltaic system in their basis for the house. When they sell the house, their capital gains will be less because they had, and, you know, capital gains, right? You invest something, and then when it's sold, you have to pay taxes on the increase in value. Here, any rational consumer or residential owner will want to increase the basis because when they sell the house, they'll have to pay fewer taxes. So what this amendment does is it states that a business or a person cannot claim the value of the solar system, the solar voltaic system, in the basis of the house. So they will have to pay taxes on the gains they made for the sale of the house exclusive of the photovoltaic system. Why is this, what's the point of this? The consumer's already getting the benefit by a decreased amount in property taxes. So they've already, they're already getting a windfall on that, appropriately so. But I don't want them to get a second windfall upon sale of the property. And, you know, these capital gains concepts may be a little arcane. I'd be happy to answer any question.
Thank you to Senator Fisher. On the amendment, Senator Tai Tui, you're recognized on the amendment.
The whole nemesis of this bill is to provide every incentive for the homeowners, you know, most especially to go green. And what the bill does is definitely provides one incentive, and that is to get a break on their property tax. However, then it gets a little bit more complicated because we want to be able to allow the new buyer to be able to build, or the seller, to have equity in the event they need to get a loan, or a buyer who wants to buy the home to get, be able to get the best bang for their bucks. So let's say, for instance, the home without the solar panels is 270, but with the solar panels, it's now 300,000. Now, if the buyer wants to go to the bank and purchase, you know, I mean, nobody just goes and purchases a home with cash these days, you know, they go to the bank. The bank will then come to the home and will assess the property. And if the property is showing to the bank, it's 300,000, but yet the homeowner has to say, oh, no, because my property tax is showing only 270,000 for the building. So I'm only asking for 270,000, but yet that leaves the buyer any opportunity for a larger loan. And I don't think we want to hinder, you know, anymore with, when we get into that section of it. I think the good author of Bill One has made a claim that a second bill will come up to kind of address, you know, opportunities that may come up, especially when it comes to dealing with the selling of the home, or providing the homeowner the ability to waive that exemption of the house. Here, we are automatically stating that the homeowner must exempt themselves from the solar panel. But what if the homeowner wants to keep the value up so that when they sell the property, they can still avail themselves of the full value of an assessment that's done not just by a realtor, but a bank? It is a bit complicated, and that's why I think the author wants to take, you know, some time to research, to speak with other people in the finance business, and to give the best deal for our homeowners, one, to make sure that this doesn't, you know, take away from encouraging them for the solar panels. So, you know, I'm anxious to hear what my other colleagues have to say. And I do have a question, though, for the author of this amendment. I know it says may, but it doesn't, it says may, but for the capital gain of tax purposes, I just want to insert equity, or equity, as a resident or business who installs solar panel. But does this mean that, okay, so that my question to the author is, if he should yield? It may give the resident, the homeowner, the option to, for capital gain... It may give the resident, the homeowner, the option to, for capital gain tax purposes, a resident or business who shall... Who installs solar... May not claim the value of the system as part of its basis. So does that mean that the homeowner can actually maintain the equity in the house and include the solar panel cost when selling the home?
Would the sponsor yield to that question? Are you sorry? Wait, who is your question directed to?
To the author of the amendment, Madam Speaker.
Okay. Senator Fisher, would you yield?
Yes, ma'am, I will yield. The question is whether or not the homeowner who installs, as I understand it, the homeowner who installs the system upon sale of the home may claim the increased value that the solar system added to the home for tax purposes?
Well, for equity purposes on when selling it.
I think they probably could, because the value of the home would be X plus solar system. I think they could, if the bank will extend that to them. But for purposes of capital gains tax analysis, they cannot. In other words, their capital gains will increase. And while that usually sounds like a bad thing, also, we have to remember that the amount of property taxes they paid, they got a... Well, it didn't decrease, but they didn't have to pay increased value on the solar system. So what I'm trying to do by the amendment is to essentially prevent taxpayer, as I said earlier, from getting a windfall. Thank you.
Thank you, Senator Fisher. Senator Taitkui, you have the floor.
Thank you, Madam Speaker. But the answer was "may." May be able to, not quite... It's not clear whether it really can or cannot do so. And we all know that, you know, solar panels have a lifetime. You know, they do definitely have a lifetime. And the older it gets, the less it allows for cells, you know, to continue to hold power. I think the lifespan might be about 20 years, and then, as you're moving forward, you know, you have to take those deductions. So it does get very complicated. I really want to do this right, you know, the first time, and... But it really is not something that I'm very comfortable with. So thank you, Madam Speaker.
Thank you, Senator Taitkui. On the amendment, Senator Son Augustine, you're recognized on the amendment.
Thank you, Madam Speaker. Very simple for the author of the amendment. You know, I just got off the phone with Madam Speaker with revenue tax. They don't do assessment for adding solar panel. They don't project to be doing assessment. It's not included. I don't understand, even know why we're even amending all kinds of stuff when it's not even... Not needed. And I agree with what the author of the amendment asked for. And the word "may" is there, so it should be "cannot." Maybe you need to amend the amendment, just to change the "may" to "cannot." But otherwise, in general, there's no assessment for solar panels. So why even... What are we doing preemptive strike? Don't do it. We don't want you to do it. Very simple. Advise them not to, because it's not on their list. Thank you.
Senator Son Augustine? Thank you. On the amendment, is there anyone else on the amendment? Senator Son Augustine?
Madam Speaker, I was referring to him, that he needs to correct it, because his statement has always been "cannot." He needs to correct the "may" to "can." "Not."
Zuzmasi. On the amendment...
Your Honor, I have no objection to that.
It's not a motion. On the amendment, is there anyone else to speak? Senator Perez, on the amendment.
Thank you, Madam Speaker. So I believe that this amendment requires a little bit more vetting, and it doesn't speak to the bill. The bill is about exempting property taxes. It doesn't talk about capital gains. So it's a substantive change. It would require another public hearing, which, in that case, I would prefer that this particular amendment be addressed in a standalone version. The other thing is that basis is determined by the IRS. It's not determined by DRT. So it's... We follow the IRS code. And so this is something that we need to vet, and I believe that we can move forward with this bill, but we can also address these concerns. As you can see, it's a little bit more complicated. We haven't had DRT really weigh in on the capital gains as it relates to solar panels. They were here... They did come to the hearing and basically said that they don't... Currently, they don't assess property taxes, because back the last time they did the evaluations, which was, I think, believe in 2015, at that point, there wasn't a huge movement towards solar panels. But I think now, solar panel, the cost of solar panels are going down, and there is more of this need, especially with the rising cost of electricity. So I do have concerns about this amendment. I understand the intent, and I do want to vet it a little bit more, rather than to add it to this bill at this time. Zuzmasi.
Zuzmasi. Senator Perez, on the amendment, anyone else like to be recognized on the amendment? If not, then the sponsor may close on the amendment. Senator Fisher.
Thank you very much, ma'am. Again, I do support this bill, and I appreciate the caution with which we are approaching it. I would like to move, at this time, to amend my amendment, to strike the words "may not" and change that to "can not." Do we need to vote on that?
Yes, we do.
Okay.
All right. Does everyone understand the amendment? Is there any objection to considering this amendment without it being in writing? Senator Son Augustine?
Madam Speaker, just hearing from the author of the original bill, the germane of that amendment, if it's appropriate or not, because if that never was discussed in public hearing, then you can't even add the amendment. Thank you.
Is that to me? It was brought up. Yeah. Capital gains. But I don't have the transcript.
We're back from recess, or, sorry, maybe we weren't in recess. Thank you for that inquiry. Senator Son Augustine has raised a point of order regarding whether the amendment, not just the amendment to the amendment, but the amendment by Senator Fisher is, you said germane to the bill. And so I've looked at the germane and the materially difference, and while this is regarding a tax, it's regarding an income tax on the properties of capital gains. But the bill is really related to real property taxes. So I'm going to rule that the amendment is not germane, or not... It's materially different from the bill. So that's my ruling. Is there any challenge? Senator Fisher?
I do challenge the chair, I suppose, ruling, and in doing so, I cite Section 402, Mason's Manual of Legislative Procedure. Again, that's Section 402, which requires that amendments be germane. Says that subsection 1, every amendment proposed must be germane. Section 2, to determine whether an amendment is germane, the question to be answered is whether the amendment is relevant, appropriate, and in the natural and logical sequence to the subject matter of the proposal. The original bill is designed to effect taxes collected by the territory. So is this amendment. Subsection 3 says, "To be germane, the amendment is required only to relate, only to relate to the same subject." These are taxes. "It may entirely change the effect or be in conflict with the spirit of the original motion or proposal and still be germane." Subsection 4, "An entirely new proposal may be substituted by amendment, as long as it is germane to the main purpose of the original proposal, which is to effect tax collections." So, ma'am, with respect, I think that the chair is in error when it finds this amendment to be non-germane. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Senator Fisher. We will take a vote on whether to overrule the chair, but my ruling is based on the bill is very clearly related to real property taxes of the territory of Guam. It does not at all involve capital gains taxes, income taxes, or other taxes that are governed right now under our barrier system by the IRS code. And I don't think that it was that interested parties should have anticipated that the change was possible. I don't think that that was anticipated, that we would be changing the IRS code as it applies to Guam versus just the real property taxes as it applies to Guam. So my ruling stands. There's been a challenge. All in favor of overruling the chair, the speaker, please raise your hand. Motion fails. Proceed on the bill. Senator Fisher, you still have the floor on the bill.
Ma'am, on the bill itself, as I said earlier, I do support it. I appreciate the fact that perhaps the capital gains issue will be fleshed out later. I also appreciate the fact that this bill is moving us towards a greener renewable economy. So I applaud the spirit of the bill, and I hope its effect will be what we all hope. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Senator Fisher. On the bill, is there anyone else who'd like to be recognized? If not, Senator Perez, would you like to close again on the bill?
Thank you, Madam Speaker. And I want to thank my colleagues for their support. And again, you know, I'm open to more dialogue as it pertains to other types of taxes, as we want to help transition our economy to more renewable energy, to help our island and to help our people, most importantly, during these difficult times. You know, electricity costs are skyrocketing, and we must do all we can to help them, to help our people. And so this was really the intent of this bill. And so I thank you for the support. Zuzmasi.
Zuzmasi. Senator Perez, on the motion to place the Bill Number 1-37COR as amended on the floor to the third reading, is there any objection? Seeing no objection, motion carries. We're still on second reading. We're on Bill Number 8-37COR, sponsored by Senator Lujan. But Senator Son Augustine, acting Majority Leader, you are recognized.
Madam Speaker, that move that we recess till 2:00.
There's a motion to recess till 2:00. Any objection? Seeing no objection, we're recess until 2:00 P.M.